So why don't we start? And our first introduction is Megan.
Great. Hi, everybody. My name is Megan Kirby. Before I get started, I wanted to take a couple of seconds to address two quick points. Firstly, I want to thank the outgoing committee members, Fran Sorrentino and Mary O'Brien, Molly Elliott, for all of your work and dedication over the years to the committee. It's truly appreciated and it's a huge part of why I'm running now. So thank you for inspiring this next wave of candidates. Secondly, thank you to the public for being here. It's really great to see such a wide variety of community members really interested and invested in this very important election. So I am the mother of three Morris Elementary students, a second grader and two preschoolers, all who have very different learning styles, needs, strengths, and things like that. And over the years, I've watched the teachers do a phenomenal job of identifying their learning, you know, methods and things like that and catering to them. And it's been a huge part of why they've been blossoming in the school system. I'm running for a seat on the committee. Pretty simple. I believe in honest and open communication. I believe in asking the hard questions. I believe in saying no and saying yes when I mean it, regardless of whether it's the popular opinion or not. I feel very, very privileged to live in a town like Lenox where community is kind of first and foremost. Lenox is very much a town where we take care of one another. My professional experience and knowing how to listen and learn before acting, I think, will ensure that I am a very strong, effective member of the committee. I think we can all agree that a powerful school committee goes beyond the classroom and partners with the whole committee. And I really look forward to being a part of that.
Thank you. Gabriella?
Hi, good evening. I also wanted to thank the Morris PTO and the community attendees for participating in civic engagement this evening. It's really nice to be here and have you all here as well. My name is Gabriella Sheehan. I have three young children in Lenox Public Schools also. I have spent my teaching career over a decade advocating for multilingual learners in Pittsfield and in Great Barrington. My expertise is in English as a second language kindergarten through grade 12 across multiple school districts. I am passionate about representing immigrant and underserved and underrepresented communities. Lenox Public Schools has outstanding faculty and curriculum. It is also a district with ample opportunities to improve, including robust, applicable, and relevant professional development for teachers, stronger and more creative programming for all students, the necessity for long-term strategic planning, and of course, greater transparency and communication with families. I look forward to the forum tonight and I look forward to serving the community of Lenox. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Orin?
Hi, I'm Orin Cass. I also want to thank everyone for being here. I think, you know, local politics is probably no one's favorite thing. I don't know that any of us enjoys running against each other. And I assume most of you have other places you might like to be this evening. But, you know, I think the schools are one of the most important things we do in this community. And so I feel very fortunate to be here in a town where everyone cares enough to be so engaged in choosing the representatives who will be on the school committee. My wife Christine and I moved out to Lenox in 2015. We actually met out here in the Berkshires at Williams College. We were on the same hallway freshman year. And after about a decade in Boston, we had two young kids and we're going to be doing jobs we could be doing from anywhere. And so we pretty much spread out a map and asked, where do we want to raise a family? And we wanted to be in driving distance of our own families. We wanted to be in a place that was far enough from a big city that the adults weren't all commuting to the city every day. And we wanted to be in a place that really valued and focused on kids and on providing a great public education. And I can honestly say that when we looked around, Lenox was the best place we could imagine. And since getting here, it's really exceeded our expectations in every respect. So much so that my parents moved out here as well a couple of years later. And, you know, I want to do my part to contribute to the community and that environment for kids. And I really hope that I can do that on the school committee. I have a lot of experience in business management, in education policy, and I also run a nonprofit organization now. And so I hope that those skills could really be helpful in guiding our schools.
I think I'm up.
Veronica?
Hi there. Hi, everybody. For those who don't know me, but my name is right there. I'm Veronica Fenton. And I also want to thank everyone, but rather than taking extra time and being, I'll just switch to the fact that it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And when my kids were in school, it was a fun time to be able to bring in food and do lots of fun things to show appreciation for our teachers. And unfortunately, again, like everything in COVID, it's a little bit more remote and distant, but the appreciation is there. And teachers have had to really dig in and move in a million different directions in order to try to both meet the needs of our students and then also meet the needs of their own families and their own children. And we have to remember when we are in any time engaging with our teachers, that they're also mothers and daughters and fathers and sons, and they have lots of other commitments. Having said that, my reason for moving here to the Berkshires 27 years ago, similar to Orin, was coming from Boston to the Berkshires, although I have family from here and I've grown up visiting the Berkshires and spent some summers working in the restaurants, was to raise my kids here. My husband and I, both professionals. I had a law degree and started my own law practice and tried to figure out how to balance caring for three, what was then, what is now three kids, what was then just the first one, and balancing work and family, as so many of us are trying to do these days. In particular, my feelings of why I originally was on the school committee from 2010 to 2016 was because of my passion for education, my belief in the need to advocate for different learners. I have three children who all graduated from the system and they experienced their education in many different ways. I believe that education is transformative. My personal story is that I was the first to go to college and college led to law school and that led to an opportunity to advocate for people in many different spaces. The skills of being a trial lawyer has also brought me in advocating for juveniles who've struggled, as well as adults in various settings. Now I'm back in the fray, hoping to participate and lead in Lenox Public Schools on the school committee once again. And my goals at this point are to really look deeply at the issues of equity and inclusion. We believe in so many ways that our schools are excellent, and they are, but the work that we need to do relates to seeing and hearing the stories of many different people who have experienced our schools and maybe not in the way that all of us have. And I think it's really important as we engage in implementing our strategic plan, welcoming our new superintendent, that we think in terms of leadership around issues of how our community can be welcoming and caring for all. And I'll save the rest for questions. Thank you.
Now Kim?
Yep, thank you. My name is Kim Winger. I think a lot of you know me through my many local activities that I've done, PTO, Girl Scouts. I've sat on the Lenox Education and Enrichment Foundation, the Lenox Library Board. I also sat way in the beginning on the Lenox Children's Center Board. My name seems to be out there a lot. My husband and I moved here in 2009. We had two children at the time, but we came here and we loved the feel of the area. It's a beautiful place to live. The schools had a great reputation. And so we transplanted. Neither of us are from Massachusetts. We're both actually from New York, but we decided to make this home. So I am looking to serve on the Lenox School Committee. I'm, I think that I'm a voice for the people. I think that I have a lot of friends and parents that are here in the school. And I think that I can, you know, help to cater to the children that that are here. I think that we need to take a look at the children that happen to be leaving the area and find out why they're leaving and help to retain them. I think that we also need to cater to the individual kids that are here and sorry, public speaking is definitely not my strength here. But I think I could be a voice for the community.
Thank you. And Michelle?
Hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Masana. I am a resident here in Lenox and grew up here, right in Lenox. I attended the Lenox Public Schools, starting in second grade, graduate of Lenox High School, class of 2011. And I also worked at the Lenox Community Center for many years and also have had the privilege of substitute teaching at the middle school and high school for many years. I'm running for school committee because I'm super passionate about our school system and I hope to give back to the community that has given me so much.
Thank you. And now I want to turn it over to Priscilla France, who's going to ask the questions. And each of you has a sheet with the order that you'll be responding. So if you can kind of go on question one and just go in that order, because I'm going to be sharing my screen. So you'll see the question that's up there. So obviously, the first person who sees it will be, won't have that much of an advantage, but everyone else will see the question. And we're really trying to keep it to 75 seconds per response. And some of the questions will, that will probably seem difficult to you, but in order to get through the evening and have the number of questions we'd like to do, that's really the way it's going to have to be. So I'm just going to share my screen and Priscilla will start with the questions.
Shannon, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm keeping time. So I'm just going to give a signal when it's about 15 seconds left. So if that helps.
That sounds great. Thank you, Shannon. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. Apologies for the technical difficulties as we, as we got started, but we are excited to have so many candidates and thank everyone for joining us in the community so we can learn a little bit more about each one. Question one. What specific skills or abilities do you feel you will bring to the school committee?
And the specific skills or abilities, I think I'll bring this to the school committee, would be being open-minded. I'm very adaptable, being reasonable. And I, since I've been a substitute teacher, I've been in the shoes of the teachers that in our schools. So I'm understanding of what they go through day in and day out and have a perspective of what it's like to be a student in the school as well.
Specific skills or abilities that I would bring to the school committee? I am not great at this public speaking, but I think my kids would say that I am definitely a very chatty person. I like to, you know, talk to people, get people's views on things. I think that I'm also a go-getter and I can definitely get things done. I think if I had something that I was working on, getting done, I would definitely be able to do that. Thank you.
So I have a little bit of an advantage, I think, because of the fact that I served at the school committee for six years. And I will say that the initial year that I was on the school committee, I'm trying to get a sense of how systems work within the school, even though I was already immersed in the schools. I feel like I've already kind of done that. And very specifically, what is needed is the ability to engage in a couple of different areas, analyzing budgets, really being able to advocate for the budget that's presented, both within the school system itself and thinking about how we're going to fund things, and also then going out to the community and ensuring the community that as an elected official, I am being very responsible and transparent and part of a transparent process of engaging with budgeting. The other thing that I think is really important is being able to engage in our negotiations with our teachers and our paraprofessionals and our custodians. And that has been a collaborative process, a collaborative, a process of collaborative bargaining takes a lot of time and patience, and it really is about communicating needs, wants, and the various needs of whether it's the district and our teachers and our staff. It also is super important to be able to have that sense of, and as a lawyer, I've done a lot of negotiating. I sometimes would joke, because I did family law, that in many ways, the Lenox community and the Lenox Public Schools are like this really big family. So sometimes we may have a disagreement, but we need to figure out how to come to consensus and come up with a contract and that feels like it fits the needs of everyone. I have a few more, but it's my time's up. So thank you. Thank you, Shannon.
I guess I think I'm next. I guess in my view, you know, the, the school committee is ultimately an oversight body. You know, I don't think we want to be telling the teachers how to do their jobs, obviously. But that in actually running a school district, there's, there's a tremendous amount that that needs to be dealt with, whether that's, as Ronnie mentioned, you know, budgeting and making sure that we're using resources well and focusing them on the most important priorities, whether that's just setting policy. In a lot of cases, it's dealing with crises that come up. You know, obviously, the pandemic over the last year is a great example of the sort of situation where there are a lot of problems that have to be dealt with. And so, you know, I've spent many years doing business management, really setting budgets, studying budgets. I've also done a lot of work studying and writing on education policy and understanding what school districts need. And right now I run my own national nonprofit organization. So I'm responsible for a budget. I'm responsible for setting the policy. I'm, I'm responsible for putting out the fires. And I think that sort of voice could be really valuable on the committee.
So my entire life is living and breathing education. I, it's, it's something that I know every part and every facet of. My master's degree is in vocational education, career and technical education. So I really think, you know, what I've heard from a lot of people is the need for stronger vocational programming in Lenox. And so I can definitely offer quite a bit in terms of finding creative ways to meet the needs of all learners. And I also have had the privilege to work with high-needs students for such a long time and understanding that not all students are academically inclined and that a lot of students have different learning styles. Those things have to be addressed. We can't just push those types of issues on teachers. We need to find ways to have programs and supports in place from the community in order to meet the needs of all of the children in our schools. Also, being a direct recipient of funding, I definitely have an idea how the funding formula works. So thank you.
Great, thank you. And this is a great question. I think my professional skills will really carry over into my role in the school committee. I am an occupational health and safety consultant. I work very closely with federal agencies such as OSHA and the Center for Disease Control. I myself am certified in infection prevention through the CDC. Part of my job involves making a lot of very difficult decisions on my own, based on facts and what I've seen myself. A lot of those decisions are very heavy decisions that impact a lot of businesses in certain ways. So I think I have excellent problem-solving skills. I believe I'm very fair. I like to always see both sides of an issue and make a very, you know, educated decision. Additionally, I believe I'm an excellent communicator. I've had about 10 years' experience in high-level management, working with a wide variety of individuals. Communication is key. I think that is a very, very important trait or skill to have on this committee.
Okay, question two. Imagine that you struck up a conversation with a seatmate on a COVID-free airplane. Because of your school committee work, you mentioned the Lenox Public Schools. This person is curious and wants to know more. How would you describe our district and what would you tell them about our schools?
Another great question. Like I've mentioned in my introduction, I think Lenox is a rarity. I think, like I said, community always comes first in Lenox. I moved here back in 2009 and it instantly felt like home. I think, you know, we are definitely a very large family. I think we have excellent schools. We, you know, are known for supporting our students, our district involved. I think a lot of the community members are very, very involved, whether you are a parent of a young child, a parent of somebody in the upper grades, or, you know, a Lenox resident. I think there is such a big emphasis on, on community here. And it would be very rare to find someone who didn't, you know, was not invested or did not care about the school district.
Hey, I did see a question earlier that somebody's having trouble seeing us. So I'm Veronica Fenton, in case people can't see us. And maybe we can, someone can help you figure that out. Because it's disorienting, I think, when you can't see who you're talking to. So I actually had the benefit of being able to do this when we were interviewing our new superintendent, because at some point when we honed in on the candidate that we thought was really best for the district, we had to then convince him that this is the place he wants to be. So I will tell you what I told him. Lenox is, as we've all said, it's, it's a beautiful, small community in which we have amazing benefits of the arts, lots of access to activities, green spaces, outdoors, a closely connected community. I will also tell people what I, what I told Mark Osland. I believe, like many situations right now, almost like talking again about Lenox as a family, within our family, sometimes we have struggles and we learn things about ourselves that surprise us. We're having a conflict with someone and we suddenly find out something about us that isn't really the way we want to be. And I feel that right now Lenox is on that learning edge of realizing that there have been students within our district who have not had their needs met in the way that they should. And so while I love Lenox and raise my kids here and I feel really passionate about it, I also feel it's very important that we examine how we can improve.
So I would first echo that it's a small community. It definitely feels like a community. The teachers are wonderful. The students are happy. The curriculum is rich and you can tell that the teachers really love what they're teaching. I would also describe it as undiscovered. Because Lenox has such high academic achievement among most of its students, we tend to try to focus on these really prideful points when in fact, there's a lot of undiscovered programs that we haven't yet figured out how to place for all of our students. So this can be done like through shared resources. This can be done through talking more with families and teachers and trying to figure out how we can plug in for all of these other students who don't fall into that really high academic achieving category, undiscovered.
I just want to jump in really briefly because we have had a couple of other folks say they're not sure who's talking. So if you wouldn't mind, just as it comes to your turn, just state your name right at the beginning. So we're sure that was just Gabriella who spoke. But going forward, if we could do that, I think it might help out some members of the community that have joined us. Thanks.
My name is Kim. I would say that if I was to talk about the Lenox Public Schools, I would say that we have a great reputation. We have, we are ranked very high in the state. We, Morris was a blue ribbon school not too long ago. We are a very close community and very invested in the school. I also think, like with most places, there are things that we can work on, but we have people who are very interested in helping to make those better.
This is Orin Cass. I guess I would probably answer the question through the perspective of what I've seen with my kids. I have a kindergartner and a second grader. I also, I have a toddler who will be at Morris soon enough. Needs, needs to learn a few more things first, I guess. But, you know, what, what's most impressed me watching my kids experience the schools is just how close-knit the community is and they, they have in, within the school. I mean, I think they have incredible relationships with, with their own classroom teachers, but, but then they also have incredible relationships with the paraprofessionals and they have incredible relationships with the specialists and they have incredible relationships with, with each other's classroom teachers. I mean, you know, as Ronnie mentioned, this is Teacher Appreciation Week and we had a fight this morning at breakfast over how many treats they should bring in for how many different people in the building they wanted to give treats to. And, and that's just, I think, something that's fairly uncommon and speaks to this just being a small school system in a good way. You know, I, my own school, I graduated from a class of 45 and, and I see that as a terrific thing and something we, we should be proud of and, and build on however we can.
This is Michelle Masana. First and foremost, Lenox is absolutely community-centric school district. It's like a huge family. And I can say, as an alumni coming back as a substitute, it was like coming right, right back home. Everyone knows who you are, extremely supportive teachers and staff, and very academically driven. And yeah.
I'm going to jump in here for one second and just say, I can actually highlight the speaker, although it didn't work too well last week. So I will try this round to highlight and hopefully it'll work.
Bob, while you're doing administrative things, I don't know, there's several people asking that the question be taken down while we're speaking. I'm not going to give an opinion on that, but I've seen several people asking for that.
I'm sorry, Ronnie, asking for the question to be taken down?
Well, I think some are thinking that once your screen is shared, what happens is you're kind of the promoter, you're the speaker, because that's your screen that's up, right? So if you ask the question and then put it aside, I think, is what some people are saying. I'm not an expert at all by any stretch of the imagination on Zoom, but I'm seeing that in the question.
Thank you.
Okay, question three. What perspective and or point of view would you bring when negotiating with the LEA? That is the Lenox Education Association Teachers Union.
So this is Gabriella. And of course, I, I'm a teacher. And so being also a parent has given me new insights into how things work. But 99% of the time, teachers really know what they're talking about. They spend all day with our children. They have the education, they have the assessments, they have all of the tools that they need to be able to determine what kids need. And when it comes to negotiations, I think it's really important that we honor the voices of the LEA and we really make sure that what they are asking for is beneficial, not just to the children, but it's beneficial to the entire community. An educational system is the foundation of any good community. And so if we are honoring their voices and, and paying attention to what their requests are, what we're doing is we are bettering Lenox for every single person that lives here. Thanks.
This is Orin Cass. You know, I think the, the LEA negotiations and, and relationships with, between the school committee and the town and the teachers really almost have to be divided into two parts. I mean, if, when we think of negotiations, I think we think of, you know, salaries and budget. But, but if you look at, at the actual contract with the LEA, that's, that's very little of what it's about. There's, there's a tremendous amount of other material that goes to how we're going to operate the schools, what the teachers need. And so I think it's really important to be collaborative in that respect and understand what the teachers think they need and how that aligns with, with the town's priorities. I think when it comes then to the actual cost side of things, how much we're going to spend, it's very important to, to do what I'd call benchmarking, which is just look at what are reasonable salaries, look at what other districts are spending, look at what we think we can afford and say that, you know, we want to be a place that teachers want to be and we want to do it in a way that really uses the town's resources as well as possible. And so be as collaborative as we can, but also recognize that it's a negotiation and the school committee is there to, to represent the town's interests.
Great, this is Megan Kirby. I'll go back to my point about the importance of being fair. I think it's incredibly important for everybody to feel heard, to feel like their opinions and voices matter. I think we would be doing ourselves a great disservice to assume that we kind of have all of the answers or have, have it all down. I think I think they could teach us quite a bit. I think we could probably teach them a little bit. So making sure that everybody feels like their voice is being brought to the table, it's being respected. And, you know, like Orin said, collaboration is, is so, so key. The last thing we want to do is kind of create these silos where it's us versus them. That is not productive and efficient to any town.
This is Michelle. I'm going to piggyback on what Orin and Megan have said. I agree on being collaborative. I would also bring a perspective of being open minded. And again, with my experience as a substitute, substitute teacher, I know what the teachers are looking for and being open to what, what their needs are and weighing all the options.
Hi, everyone. Veronica Fenton here. And again, I've had the privilege and experience of actually negotiating contracts with, I think the only one I didn't do was the custodial contract. Hang on one second. Sorry, I'm still, still seeing Michelle, but that's okay. Hi, Michelle. I don't know if you see me as the speaker right now. This Zoom thing is fun. Anyway, the actual process of doing a collaborative negotiation with our, with our unions is so much about connecting and communicating and we work through a process to frame issues. Obviously, the issue of salary, as Orin mentioned, is important and being able to be competitive is important. But sometimes there are a lot of other issues and when you engage in that process, you're framing issues in a way that is opening communication. There are many things that we as members of the school committee perhaps don't know about what happens in the day to day. And at the same time, there may be goals that we want within the district that require a shifting of resources, a shifting of, of faculty or staff time, and we need to be able to engage in those conversations. So the process is, as we've said, collaborative. The process is respectful, open, communicating, learning from one another. And I've, in my experience, I've found times when we are going into something thinking that, oh, well, we need this or we need that. And through the process of communication with each other, we come up with other ideas and we say, okay, well, we need more supervision in the hallways, for example. Well, do we need faculty to do that? Is there some other way we can accomplish that? So that's just a very tiny example. But also I think coming from the strategic plan, one of the things that's come up a lot is the concepts of professional development. I think that's a very important issue for teachers and faculty of how is their time being spent in learning to do their job better or learning something different, learning new curriculum that we want students to have access to. So there's a number of different components, but it all stems from openness, communication, collaboration, and putting the needs of our students and our district because we, again, are respectful of the resources of our taxpayers, of needing to be able to take all of those things into consideration. Shannon, I couldn't see you, so I don't know if you've already given me the high sign a few times. Sorry. This is tricky.
Okay.
Hi, this is Kim. I would, you know, as Michelle said, kind of piggyback on Orin and Megan's comments. We need to be negotiating and collaborating together. We need to find out the needs of the teachers and we need to make sure that we're taking those into account as well as meeting the needs of the community and not, you know, weighing too, too heavy one side or the other. I think we can, I think we could work together and I think it would benefit everyone.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Question four. Recently, the five year strategic plan was presented. What do you see as the most pressing issue with that, within that plan?
I, I was a member of the Strategic Planning Committee over, over the last couple of years. And so I think it's, oh, sorry, this is Orin Cass, everyone. A, a member of the Strategic Planning Committee, and, and I think there's, there's a lot of really important stuff in that document. I think, you know, in my mind, the, the element that's most important this year and, and probably almost every year is, is academic, what, what we call the academic journey, which is, you know, what is the actual program that our schools offer? And how do we help move kids from when, when they get there in kindergarten to, to when they're graduating as seniors? And, you know, I think we focused on, on a number of things there that are of particular interest to me. One that I would want to focus on and, and has come up somewhat before is, is looking more broadly than, than just thinking that we're preparing everyone for college. I think that's obviously a very important thing to do for everyone who wants to go to college. But there are an awful lot of, of kids who, who might want or, or be better served by, by considering other pathways. And I don't think we do as good a job presenting that full set of options and, and serving kids who might opt for them. And so figuring out how to get better at that, I think, is, is a place to definitely focus in particular.
This is Megan Kirby. I would have to agree 100% with Orin on that. I believe part of the, the plan was called diversity and inclusion. And I think it's important to note that while it certainly, you know, encompasses it, I don't think it's all about race and, and things like that in this particular context. I think, you know, while we're very, very fortunate and, and lucky to have such great school systems academically, a lot of our students, you know, that's their goal is to go away to a, a university. And it's not realistic for every learner for a variety of reasons. And I think we need to kind of look at what barriers are in place right now for those students that, you know, might not feel like they have another option. I know countless people, including in my own family, who didn't really think they had another option but to go to a, a college or university. And they're not really quite sure what they want to do with their lives. And they end up either not enjoying that time in their lives or finishing and having a massive amount of student debt. That's a very real issue for a lot of people right now. So I think taking a look at other options and making sure that we support those that, you know, have other desires is absolutely crucial for our students.
Hi, this is Kim speaking. I would agree with the same. I know that, I, you know, talking to other parents and things, I know that there have been some students that, while I have a 14 year old, I thought she would be farther along in knowing what she wanted from her future and where she wanted to be. But we're not there yet and I think it's great that some of her classmates know that they may not want to go to college or know that they, they do want to go to college at this point and, and what for. And, but I think we need to realize that not every student would know that by now. And I think we need to offer them opportunities to investigate and to kind of look into other options and not just say that, you know, there's, there's only one path for them. I think we need to make sure that they're aware of everything that's all the possibilities for them. Thank you.
This is Gabriella. And one thing that the plan, I don't think that it was as urgent stated in the plan as I, I think it might be. In my introduction, I mentioned that we need to have strategic long-term planning in Lennox. The fact is, we have a declining population of children in Berkshire County and we really need to address those concerns across all of the school districts in the county. So one of the things that is really important is that we start looking at, you know, five-year, 10-year and 15-year plans and, and figure out ways that maybe we can share certain resources. And for example, early college is really trending right now so that high school students can be participating in our local colleges and be earning college credits while they're still in high school. AP classes do that as well, but Lennox doesn't have like a very robust AP program at the moment. But early college is another alternative that, that could be something that we can look at as well as not necessarily inventing vocational programs, but finding ways to maybe reserve seats at certain vocational schools in the county and, and finding ways that we can share a lot of the, the needs that we have with other schools who are also in the same position as us, which is, which is a declining population of children.
Hi, everyone. This is Michelle. I think what should be prioritized is mental health for teachers and students. I think the COVID-19 pandemic really kind of shocked us initially and being trapped in our homes rather than in our normal routines shook us up. And being a student, it can be very hard to juggle all the responsibilities that you have. And teachers don't have it easy either. They're managing their home life and all the responsibilities they have in their job. So I think focusing on mental health, whether it's offering a mental health day for students and teachers or offering different workshops to focus on that, but that's the issue, I think.
Hi, everybody. This is Veronica Fenton. I have, was also had the privilege of serving on the Strategic Planning Committee and participated in the previous strategic plan while I was on the school committee. One of my major concerns is, is the issue of the culture at Lennox Public Schools. It was a concern of mine when I was on the school committee before. And when we did this survey and evaluation, what we learned that we still haven't solved a lot of the problems that we're, that we continue to work on. More particularly, within the last year or two, what we've come to realize and we know to be true is that many students who come from diverse backgrounds have not had the same experience as other kids have had, have not felt welcome. Many of them have found ways to adapt and they have gotten a good education and they're, you know, they're moving forward. But others have left the district because they've been harmed by our inability to meet their needs and particularly to address issues of harm, racist things that have been said, harmful things that have been said, as well as anti LGBTQ things that have been said. Sometimes that is also about teaching our students how to be allies, teaching our community how to do better, to stand up for the rights of all people. And I really think it's important, not that just we think about, oh, a person of color was harmed in that way and that's too bad, but how are we all harmed when we don't step up and we don't make sure that our school system is providing safety and care for all? And so in the strategic plan, in the part about school culture, it is really doing something where we gather together and we learn about ourselves and we learn about others through hearing voices, listening to people, believing their stories, and then adapting the way that we look at our community. We don't necessarily have to have a widely diverse community. We, we recognize that our community is not that diverse, but we have the ability to learn diverse perspectives, to hear from various people and to engage in learning together. I've been reading so many books and so many young people have been reading books to help us and listening to speakers to help us to have perspectives that can help us grow as a community. I think we're seeing this all over the county and I want to see us engage in that learning as a community together. And sometimes that's hard, but I think we can roll up our sleeves and we can work together on that. I'm sorry, Shannon, I didn't see you.
Okay, onto question five. What do you think about Berkshire Hills Regional School District's plan to end the practice of grouping students by perceived academic ability, to end the practice known as tracking? Is it a plan you would support for Lennox?
I'm sorry, it, something came up on my screen, so I didn't get the question. I'm so sorry.
No worries at all. I'll repeat. What do you think about Berkshire Hills Regional School District's plan to end the practice of grouping students by perceived academic ability, to end the practice known as tracking? Is it a plan you would support for Lennox?
That is a good question. I think that it is important to work with children's strengths, but I also think that it's important to bring those who aren't, don't have the same academic abilities to give them the chances that they wouldn't have, say, in other classes, you know, where they, where they separated them out. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have an answer for this. I'm sorry.
Um, this is something I would support. I think obviously it would have to be weighed. But I do believe that not having tracking in the schools where everyone is working together is a good thing because I think you kind of learn new strengths and weaknesses that each other has when you work together. And you can learn more from that. So yes, I do support it.
This is Orin. I do not support it. I would, I would be quite strongly opposed to it, actually. You know, I think it's very important that we have programs that meet our students where they are and, and deliver education that's going to be of the most value to them. This, this actually goes to what we were talking about a minute ago, about how we're going to have students on different pathways and, and thinking that we, we should just group everyone together in one bucket. That doesn't really serve them very well. And, and so I think Michelle makes a fantastic point that it's, it's incredibly important students have time together and, and students have time to learn from their peers and interact with, with all different students in different ways. But if, if you're talking about, let's say, math, you know, the reality is that, that particularly by the time you get to high school, students are, are going to be at different places in math. I, I think everybody who's, who has kids has seen that, that their own kids often are at different levels. And so I think our priority has to be delivering a great education to everybody, which means providing classrooms and, and teaching and curriculum for them that's, that's going to meet them where they are. And, and that means assessing where they are and, and providing the right kind of education for them.
Hi, everyone. This is Veronica Fenton. I think that this question is good, but it really, like everything, it's not a black and white answer. You have to step back and actually think a little bit about what tracking means. One of the struggles in a school district as small as Lennox is that when you have students on a particular academic track, because our schedule is so tight, and I don't want to get too wonky on it, but because our schedule is so tight, what happens is students have a hard time doing what we call jumping the track. So if you have a tracking system that is so rigid, I think Orin's point about, you know, some students are going to take calculus and other students are going to take accounting or more remedial math because they struggle with math, that's true. But tracking doesn't mean that. Tracking actually means how are we blocking kids into certain paths that doesn't give them the ability to grow and move around within the system? And I'll give you a specific example. One of my kids, who's given me permission to give this example, in middle school was not as confident in math as the student would, would normally be. The student then also engaged in science, which in elementary school, she didn't really have a lot of enriching science. And yay, she had one of the most amazing science teachers who we're still benefit to have at Lennox. And you can all guess who she is because she's amazing. Her confidence in science grew and she decided she wanted to really go on that, on her science track. But guess what? She wasn't in on her math track. So what happened then is we had to actually advocate and move her to jump the track. And I'll finish one second, Shannon. Thank you so much. So I think we have to think in terms of tracking in the ways in which it's actually locking kids out of being on the path that they want to be on, and we have to prevent that. And that's a real tricky thing in Lennox because we're a small school with a very tight schedule. So what I say is, I, I don't believe in rigid tracks for anyone and we need to assist students in being able to grow up, to grow to their potential and provide opportunities for all of them. Thank you.
This is Megan Kirby. I absolutely agree that this is not an easy decision to, to be asked to make. I think there's a lot of gray area here. I'll express a couple of my concerns for pros and cons. I definitely will echo what everybody else is saying. One of my concerns about doing tracking within the schools is what is the plan as far as reassessing kids once they are kind of classified as a, a certain group? Are those children going to remain in that group despite maybe having made gains throughout the school year? Is there a plan to reevaluate those kids and move them where they need to be as they continue to grow? Secondly, I, I do worry, you know, that it, it's sort of a, a method of segregation. How do the kids in lower, you know, academic classes feel? Is there kind of a superior, superiority complex going on there for the kids that are in an upper level? You know, I, I was a kid who really benefited from advanced placement classes in high school. So I absolutely am thankful for that opportunity and thankful that I was able to get kind of the education that kind of fit my needs at that. the education that kind of fit my needs at that moment, but I definitely see um some concerns. So in order to give a firm yes or no, I would need more information. Thank you.
So I don't think this question is difficult at all. Uh, in fact, I overwhelmingly agree with removing tracking. All the studies show that students who are in these lowest level classes are students who have uh lower socioeconomic backgrounds, ethnic minorities, neurodiverse students. And it's a terrible unfair teaching practice that we have done for decades. And I'm so, so proud to be part of a perfect group, a progressive district that has realized how ineffective it is for um for the community as a whole to track these kids and put them in these lower level classes. When you're raising the academic rigor of your lowest level class, what you're doing is you're building up the students and you're offering modeling from the higher achieving students. There are still honors classes in in this model. There are still advanced placement classes in this model. We're not taking away academic achievement from kids who can do it. We are lifting the students who need that extra help.
Thank you, everyone. Onto question six. Please talk to us about your fiscal experience. How would you go about making a tough choice when it came to budget cuts? What would your process be?
Okay, Veronica Fenton, here I am, starting out as number one on this one. Um, I have had experience with multiple budgets and needing to think in terms of how we're going to allocate money. I I don't want to change the question, but I kind of do because it says budget cuts. Um, I think everything is about how, what are our needs and how, what is, or do the available resources? What are our needs and how are we going to um fund what we need? And everything is a judgment call and everything's a value judgment. Sometimes what is required when we're struggling with very very tight fiscal restraints is cutting some some money out of it. What we want to try to do is preserve personnel so that our students can have access to teachers because that's the main goal of what we do. Um, sometimes we also have to look in terms of spreading costs out over periods of time. Some of the things I'm very proud of that happened in Lennox while I was on the school committee was reformulating the way we actually look at the revenue that's coming into the town, um both looking at highs and lows. And what Chris Ketchin has done as a town manager in a lot of ways, when there's been excess revenue, is that he's been setting that aside for capital improvements. So now when we're looking at our budgets, we don't always have to include capital improvements in our year-to-year budget, and we spread it out. We we think more long-term planning as opposed to from each quarter to each year to each fiscal year. Um, and I think I'm out of time, so.
Uh, this is Gabriella. And uh, my experience, I have worked on negotiations and uh, of course, looking at district budgets. And you know, that's one of the points that I was making about strategic long-term planning. We have to look at not only how we, like recently, they cut the budget, but there's so many ways that we can find creative programming so that we wouldn't necessarily have to demand so much in the first place. And also um finding ways to, again, share resources with other with other districts in ways that will help us. We really have to address the issue that we have so many students who are school choice. We would be getting so much more money if our students were residents of Lennox and working with the town and figuring out ways to attract young families to stay here and live here and and grow our student population. Those are all things that surround how much money we have and and also how much money we would have to figure out to be flexible with, but I think that it just needs, it begs for a greater discussion on on, again, things that we haven't necessarily looked at or thought of and um in a way that will help the the teachers and the students and the community as a whole meet every financial demand from every aspect of the town. Thank you.
This is Michelle. Um, although I don't have any personal experience dealing with a school budget, um, I think it would be important to uh be collaborative with the schools, the teachers, the community and understanding um what the priorities are for the school um and cutting um, I guess what what would need to be cut um and um analyzing how we could maybe get creative and um look to other us school districts and sharing resources um to cut down on budget.
This is Megan Kirby. Um, professionally, I have a lot of experience with budgets. Um, for the last uh eight or nine years, I've been responsible for multimillion dollar budgets in the manufacturing industry. Two things that have been crucially important for me to be successful in this area um is prioritizing and using financial forecasting, staying on top of things. You know, when you create a budget, it's so important to monitor that budget, to do continuous check-ins to see where you stand so you aren't in a bad position uh when it's time to reevaluate, when you're not looking at making massive cuts. Um, of course, like any budget, things happen and sometimes cuts are necessary, but I think if you have a pretty solid understanding of what your priorities are, you know, you'll be okay. Um, I also agree that being creative a lot of times can you know, open the door to preventing um some pretty serious cuts. Uh, a lot of times we think, you know, it's either um, you know, cut this, let this go. Um, but a lot of times we can kind of reevaluate our, reevaluate our internal systems um and see what we can do um and use budget cuts to last resort. And that's been my experience. Thank you.
Hi, this is Kim. Um, when we would be talking about um budget cuts, I just would keep in mind, uh, we want to, you know, we want salaries to be paid so that we can retain the teachers that we uh have valued and that are good teachers and keep our reputation great. Um, I also want to make sure that money that is budgeted for certain programs are being used for those programs if the programs are no longer realistic, reasonable being used. Um, you know, allocate that money elsewhere or find uh, you know, cut that, those bump, uh, those funds. I'm so bad at this Zoom stuff. I'm so sorry. Um. Yeah, I think it's just very important to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of the kids with the money that we have and and not putting monies aside for programs that are no no longer necessary. Thank you.
This is Orin. Uh, I guess in my mind, you know, there are really two different questions in budgeting that that sometimes get mixed up. Um, one question is what's the total amount that we're able to spend? And and another question is where are we going to spend that money? And you know, one thing that I've observed in in recent years where I think we can improve is that, you know, if we see the budget can can go up, then just sort of every category of the budget goes up. And the reality is that in any given year, there should be things we're learning and and places we're realizing we can save money. Uh, and there should be other places where we're saying, gosh, this is a real priority. We we need to be investing more money here. And and so instead of just thinking of the budget as as a pile of fourteen million dollars that that goes up by some percentage every year, I think we really need to look in each category and ask, why are we spending this much? Is is there a place where we could save money? Not because it's about cutting the budget, but because every dollar you can save in one place is is an extra dollar you can potentially spend somewhere else. And so really evaluating what are the priorities and how do we focus the money there, I think is the best way to always make the best use of our resources and and prove to the town that we're being good stewards of those resources, which which I think is critical to to maintaining the trust.
Okay, I'm gonna jump in here. Um, the next two questions I, for those of you in the public, I had sent all of the participants, the uh candidates, a list of the order that the questions were going to be asked. And we only had six questions on that list, but we have more questions that we're going to ask. So I'm going to tell the candidates now that question seven will be question one order and question eight will be question two order.
Okay.
And I'll figure out how to share the screen again.
Thanks, Bob. That was a question that was on my mind. So I think that's a good plan, going back to the order for question one. All right, question seven. Specifically, in what ways can the Lennox Public Schools be more inclusive for all learners?
Wow, this is a great question. Um, be inclusive for all learners. Um, I guess what comes to mind for me um would be seeing what what students need, um what resources are are going to be useful for them in learning, um whether it's a digital resource or a physical resource um or something in the in the community, opportunities that could be helpful for them. Um, and uh seeing seeing how we could um get those resources to them. So yes.
Sorry, I guess um my question with that is uh to all learners in this Lennox, or is it uh opening us up to um choice students that would be interested in coming? Um, I think we need to look at you know, what what needs our students at the school have, um what needs we could be meeting that we aren't meeting and what is drawing um our local students elsewhere. I think we need to um you know, make sure that we are looking at the entire population and not just trying to uh meet the needs of one academic pathway, I guess.
Okay, so when it comes to inclusive practices, and I don't know if I mentioned earlier in my opening that I did have the benefit of getting a master's degree in teaching from Mount Holyoke that I finished in two thousand fifteen and then did my stu- my um student teaching in South Hadley. And one of, one of the things I had to put into practice was this concept of inclusive learning and universal design for learning. So first of all, I think we have to start from the fact that all of our classes should be thinking about that we are all different learners. And if we think about how we all are as adults when we make decisions, um, some of us are, you know, we really learn in auditory ways. We need, or some of us need to write, some of us need to try things. So really, in most academic settings in schools in this day and age, our teachers should have, and many of them do, um have training around inclusive practices. So we have to make that a priority that if for some reason, some of our teachers, because they're new and developing or because they're coming from a different background and skill set, have support. And I really say that with support because it's not about making anybody wrong or bad. It's about recognizing that we have all learners in a classroom. And so when you're doing an inclusive classroom practice, you actually built into your lessons, built into the teaching the fact that there's some of this is going to be in writing and some of it's going to be oral and some of it's going to be hands-on. And if we build our school systems from preschool to to twelfth grade around recognizing that we're all different and we all learn differently, that doesn't feel like it's, oh, I'm in this special needs class or, oh, I'm in this class. It's saying, we're all different. And I know students who have excelled as AP students who will say, I'm a hands-on learner. I'm sorry, because I can't see. I'm a hands-on learner and I need to do this this way. It is not a reflection. If you need different types of teaching, it's not a reflection of your value as a student. It's about all of the students being able to learn in the ways that they see fit. And teachers do a great job with this, and so we need to support that. Thank you.
Uh, this is Orin. Uh, I think when we talk about inclusion, we really have to think both in terms of of each teacher's practices and how we make sure we're addressing the needs of of individual students in the classes and different styles of learning. And so making sure that teachers feel like they have the professional development opportunities and and the experience to um to handle all different types of learners, I think is incredibly important. But then I think we also have to recognize that being inclusive as a district as a whole doesn't mean treating everybody exactly the same way. Uh, that that actually, if we want to be inclusive, then it it comes back to something I think a bunch of us have been talking about, which is respecting that that people are different learners and and in times are going to want and need different things from the schools. Uh, and that that the right way to be equitable and inclusive is actually to make sure that we have programs that serve them. And so I think, you know, one thing I've heard from a lot of folks is is one way our culture in the school could really improve is to elevate and and better respect different post-graduation pathways. To say it's it's terrific if you're going off to college. Uh, and it's also terrific if if you're headed in some other direction. And so making sure that that we support and and encourage all of those different pathways, I think, is is especially important to being more inclusive.
So I just want to, this is Gabriella. Uh, and I just want to mention that, you know, inclusivity is is a term that embodies uh all different kinds of students. So if a student has an IEP or um they're learning a new language or they have um ethnic or racial diversity or um socioeconomic like varying socioeconomic levels, we want to be sure that they are A, having their needs met and B, that they are being heard. So on the one hand, you want to offer the teachers professional development so that they're able to diversify curriculum and that students are able to, you know, move through academic, their academic curriculum in a fair way where they are being challenged, but they are also um learning. And then on the other hand, we really need to hear what these students and their families are saying because unless we know what they need and what they want, it will be difficult to make a culture shift to address what those needs and wants are. So increasing communication and and really getting feedback from our families.
This is Megan Kirby. And I look at this um kind of as a two-part um answer. I think from a practical side, you know, the obvious is encouraging uh more inclusive language, kind of challenging um the age-old stereotypes that do exist within our schools and and exist everywhere in the world. Um, you know, whether that means uh, you know, professional development, encouraging people to use a in inclusive language, kind of expanding the the variety of material that we expose our children to. Um, I think that's incredibly important. Um, an easy example of that is to kind of update the library. Um, I was thrilled when I went into Barnes and Noble a couple of days ago and saw a very, very inclusive selection of children's books, and that is something that was not around when when I was growing up. And I love that for our children, that we are, we are being more inclusive in that respect. Um, and I will echo um some other sentiments about, you know, while it's great if you want to go to college, if that's your plan, that's wonderful. I think Lennox has always been focused on, you know, encouraging kids to do well academically, which is great. But I think community involvement um is huge and and making sure that uh we are upping our um you know, uh, making students feel like they're um included. There are so many people in town that could be um guest speakers to kind of come talk to the students about, you know, this is my career path. This is what made me want to do this. This is how I have been successful. Um, the more you've exposed children to different opportunities, the more confident they'll feel in making a decision um to kind of help guide them um for their life after school.
Okay, and finally, question eight. What is one thing you think is really special about the Lennox School District?
And we're doing the question two format, correct?
That's correct. We're on the order for question two.
Great. So Megan Kirby again. Um, I, one of my preschoolers is a part of the integrative preschool program. And I will be completely transparent um that I had, you know, some concerns for him before he started there. Um, this is his second year in preschool. Um, he received some special services. Um, he has an IEP for some um disabilities that he struggles with. And I worry for him. Um, I worried that he would feel um maybe like a little bit of an outsider. I have seen absolutely the opposite. Um, our preschool program is something to be really, really proud of. Um, we have wonderful children, wonderful, wonderful teachers. My son, I can um say confidently that he feels like a valued member of his class um despite his disabilities. Um, he has made amazing strides and progress with the help of his teachers and specialists, and I'm so, so thankful for that. I think that is very unique to Lennox. Um, and I love seeing the children get together with all different um skill levels and um capabilities.
Okay, so what's special about Lennox? Again, I had the wonderful joy of talking to Mark Grassland about what's so great about Lennox. So first I will say, I think that so many students have really um got a sense of pride from my student, my children certainly have a sense of pride. got a sense of pride from my student, my children certainly have a sense of pride in Lennox. I've seen the ways in which students really reach out to one another and help each other. Again, I've been concerned sometimes that that doesn't always go to every child, but I've certainly seen a lot of interaction with students with high special needs, where there's a lot of helping, um, one student to another, cheering each other on in sports. Uh, we have our wonderful tradition of having the winning sports team, you know, go behind the fire trucks and everybody cheers, and it feels really, really like a very strong sense of community. And I think that's really wonderful. I also do love the way that our our schools carry into the community. Um, when there is an activity after school, then you see the students coming around. And um, when there's a fundraiser, then we see the students um at Apple Squeeze asking for help around what they're doing. And I have heard people talk about the need to have more of that, that the people who in Lennox who do not have kids in the schools want to see more of that. So I think us being a full community, supporting one another, and engaging with the people who are not in involved with the schools is a real strength for Lennox that I want to see us do more of.
This is Gabriella, and um I just have, uh, coming into Lennox, having been in Pittsfield and then also having experience in Great Barrington, I can tell you that Lennox Public Schools is definitely unique in that you do have a really strong sense of community. And one thing that I really noticed with my children is that their teachers really love teaching. And even during the pandemic, when things have been so hard, you can tell that these teachers really, really love their jobs. And um, that's something that I'm like acutely aware of, and I think it's just an incredible, it says something to the culture of the schools there, that teachers feel respected and confident and um and gracious enough to, you know, really approach parents with extreme professionalism and kindness and care. And um, that's something that is very unique to Lennox, and and I just, I have to say, I'm I'm very honored to be a part of it. So thank you to the teachers for for helping me to realize that.
I'm Kim Winger. Um, I would say what is so special about the Lennox School District. Um, in me running for the school committee, I have been on the fence back and forth. This forum tonight has really made me extremely nervous, and this alone is part of the reason that I was concerned about staying with this uh with the campaign. I have had the other candidates reach out to me personally and encourage me and say that they've heard great things about me, and that's, it's amazing. I know that there are staff, I know from both Morris and LM MHS that I know who have other facets of life that I know them through, say Girl Scouts, or um, you know, the Community Center, just all all kinds of, it's just a really close-knit. It's a close-knit community. It's great. Um, everyone that I other parents that I know, you know, they all look out for your kids. Thanks, Shannon. They look out for your kids. I just think it's a, it's a wonderful place.
This is Orin. Uh, I guess for me, something I think is just incredibly special about Lennox is is the size of the district. You know, there there aren't that many districts out there that have have stayed independent and and kept their own elementary all the way through high school, where where a class is maybe forty-five or fifty kids. And there are trade-offs with that. You, you know, there are, there are things that aren't great about about being in a small class, but on on balance, I think it's fantastic. Um, I I mentioned that I I graduated in a very small high school class myself. And, you know, look, there were things that a that a big school had that we didn't, but the flip side is, you know, you actually know everybody else in your class. You know, not only your teachers, you know, the other teachers. If, you know, somebody wants to start a club that doesn't exist, you 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 can kind of just get together and start it. And so I think preserving that is incredibly important. On on the Strategic Planning Committee, I I was really interested in in doing a lot of work, looking at our demographic trends, and was really encouraged to see that that I think we're in a fairly stable place right now, and and finding ways to preserve that and and make sure we can keep what makes this so unique as a small independent district is is a big priority for me.
This is Michelle. Um, what's special about Lennox is pretty much what we've said the whole night. Um, we are a community, we're a family. Um, our classes are so small that we know each other, we care about each other, um, and in and outside of the classroom and for life. So that's what's very special about Lennox.
Okay, we're we're at that point where we're going to be asking you to kind of give a closing remarks. And I am going to put one more question on the screen. I'm going to actually ask Shannon to go to two minutes, since we seem to be running okay time-wise from when we actually started the meeting. So give everyone two minutes, and I'd like you to, in your answer, to address the question here, as well as giving kind of your closing remarks. So I'm going to post one more question.
Bob, can I just interject for one second? Um, I know we're going a little off schedule, but I did notice that there are several, there's, the chat has a lot of questions, has a lot of comments, but really only a couple of questions. And I guess I just wonder if it if it would be feeling kind of less democratic if some of those questions weren't able to be answered. I mean, I'm just one person, but I saw several of them, and I think they go off-topic from what we've already discussed and might be helpful, but if everybody's willing to answer them. But you have to kind of scroll through and see. I think there's really only three that are actual questions.
Yeah, I've tried to grab a couple of those. I'm I'm pulling one more here. Um, I, not from that list, actually. But I have one more question. Priscilla?
What do you believe is or are the most challenging factor or factors facing the Lennox Public Schools? How would you propose to meet that challenge, and why do you think you're the most qualified person to do that?
And we'll start with the question three in that order. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we'll start with the closing order, with Kim first.
Uh, this is Kim Winger. Um, I think one of the most challenging factors in the Lennox Public School is not not being able to retain our students. Um, I've heard a lot uh in the fairly recent past of students that are choosing to go elsewhere. You know, either they, whether it be to some diversity issue, or whether it be to um the school just not meeting their needs academically. I really think that that is something that we kind of need to look at and see how we can retain our students, make sure that we're meeting their needs and and even welcoming, um, you know, choice students or or other families that are looking into moving to the area. Um, I, I, I guess in closing then as well, um, I am not a great public speaker. I am not great with Zoom. I had my fourteen-year-old help me figure out how to get on to this tonight, which is why I showed up a little late. I am just passionate about the community. I'm passionate about the school. I'm passionate about being mostly behind the scenes. I I don't do well at promoting myself. I just, I love being part of everything, and I love doing what I can to make a difference. I would love to be voted onto the school committee. If I don't have an answer to something, I would, I would look it up and I would uh make the best decision that I could. I would talk to my friends, I would talk to other people in the community, and I would make the best decision that was right for us. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for hanging there with us through all of this. So first and foremost, I think the most urgent need that we have as a district is to focus on the issue of diversity, equity, and inclusion. That's a word and a term and a phrase that's been thrown around a lot, but it actually has some real substance to it, which requires us to do some self-examination, to understand exactly how we've gotten to a place where students who are um not typical, maybe students of color, students from immigrant backgrounds, have not felt as welcomed as we want to think they have. Um, I think we're in a community where many, many people are well-intentioned and thought we sort of had already tackled that. And what our students are telling us and what our communities are telling us is that we've got a lot more work to do, and that is, should be job number one. And it is part of our strategic plan for a reason. It's part of a lot of the skillset that we hired Mark Gosselin to help us with. Um, and I think it's so important. If it's not just about keeping and attracting a person who comes from a diverse background, and diversity for me also includes, of course, the LGBTQ community, um, people who struggle, um, we we use this term ableism, people who struggle with some type of a disability is also extremely important that they're not totally defined by that disability, and that they're able to fully engage and participate in Lennox Public Schools fully and without feeling as somehow that they're sidelined. And also includes people from different socioeconomic backgrounds. That's also a conversation that has come up in Lennox. So I believe that that our analysis, our self-analysis of where we are in these issues requires communication, requires vulnerability, requires openness and learning, and talking to one another. And as I said, listening to stories of others who have recently had the bravery to come forward and say, here's what's been happening to me. I think we've wanted to believe that that doesn't happen, um, but we know it has been happening. And so we need to make changes. And in addition, we need to make changes, and I'll speak for myself as a person who is white and living in this community, that when I learn how to do better for others, that's a benefit to me. And I'm not in any way being selfish in some way, but we are doing a disservice to our children when they are growing up in Lennox, not really understanding how to see diverse perspectives and be with people from diversity in a way that's respectful. When our young children are not being taught the skills to be an ally, being taught how to stand up against bullying, um, it's really, really important. And I'm sorry, I can't see Shannon.
Yeah, but time, you're out of time.
Yeah, so that's the number one, and I've been engaging in this training for several years now, and I believe um that I am the right person to help lead this work. Thank you.
Hi, this is Michelle. Um, I think the two factors um that are challenging for the Lennox Public Schools um would be academic needs of students and the mental health and well-being of students and teachers, um, and balancing the school, work, um, life. Um, and I think I'm the most qualified um to doing that, um, as I am an alum of Lennox Public Schools. Um, I've worked at the Lennox Community Center for many years, as well as being a substitute teacher in the Lennox Public Schools. Um, I have a bachelor's degree um in biology from Smith, a master's degree in exercise and health science from UMass Boston. Um, and in closing, I would say I hope to earn your vote as a local kid. Um, and I'm very passionate about our school system. Um, we have a wonderful system, and um I hope to move it even further.
Uh, hi, this is Orin. I I guess I would highlight a short-term challenge and a long-term challenge. I I think the short-term challenge is still about COVID. You know, we haven't spoken much about that at the forum tonight, but it's it's obviously been the challenge for for the whole world, but but also the Lennox School System uh over the past year. And I think there's been, you know, heroic work done by by teachers, by the administration, and and frankly, by our students to to make the best of it. Uh, but I think there were also some real ways that that we've been behind the eight ball in in finding ways to uh provide our kids the the best possible education. And and that's going to continue into the fall. Um, I I think there is a potential to to pretty much be back to normal in the fall, uh, but it's not going to happen by itself. We are going to have to have a very intentional effort and commitment to saying, our kids deserve to be back in normal school in the fall, they need it, and that's what school is going to be like, and we're going to make the preparations and the policies to make that happen. Uh, and and so that's that's short-term, but that's a huge priority for me, and and I hope it will be for the whole committee. Uh, you know, longer term, I think when I look at at our district, I I think we do a lot of things incredibly well. Um, but I'd love to see us being more creative. You know, Lennox should have just extraordinary public schools. We we dedicate the resources to it. We we have the resources in the community for it. We have the teachers for it, and I would love to just see us be more innovative. One of the great things about being a small district is is you you can try things. You can say, hey, this group of kids needs this thing, let's, let's go out there and solve it. Uh, and and I would love to see the school committee take more of a leading role in in identifying and and trying to address some of those issues, particularly in in partnership with with our new superintendent. You know, those are, those things come down to governance, they come down to management, they come down to budgets, they come down to to knowing how to run things and get things done. And uh, that's, that's not the sexiest work, but it's it's something I I spend my days on as well and and would love to contribute that to the community. Thank you.
So I try to make it a, this is Gabriella. Uh, I try to make it a habit to not use the word challenge too much and and instead look at it as an opportunity. Um, I do think Lennox has a lot of opportunities to address things, uh, as has been mentioned, in diversity. And it's, it's not enough to just talk about it. You have to put people in positions of decision-making so that it has an impact on the community. And if you're not hearing from diverse communities, then uh, then you're not doing the work, the hard work. Um, I think that we need to increase our communication, our transparency. We need to have uh easier access to school committee meetings and PTO meetings and things like that. Um, I think that we need to um address our programming and and diversify our programming. I think that we um have a lot of opportunities to meet people where they are and and to come up with creative new things, to to invent ideas that haven't actually been on the table yet. And it feels to me that Lennox has a willingness to change, they have a willingness to grow, and um, and I honor that. And so I hope that if you are planning on voting on May tenth, plug for all of us, uh, that you really consider what what it is that you want for your kids and for the community as a whole. And and if we're going to do this, let's, let's do this. Let's do the hard work that has to be done. Thanks.
Hi, this is Megan. Um, I'd like to talk about COVID for a moment. Um, I know it's it's been really nice, um, you know, looking forward to a new normal. I think with the vaccine out there, we know what we are getting there. The COVID pandemic has been the most disruptive public health and educational crisis we've seen in generations, and I think it's uncovered a lot of opportunities for improvement. Um, speaking from a professional standpoint, I think there is a lot I could bring to the table as far as coming up with policies, programs, procedures for emergency preparedness. This will not be the last time that something like this happens in our lifetime, unfortunately. Um, I think we can kind of take what we've learned throughout the last year and ensure that we are prepared if this were to happen again, um, to make sure that our kids are in a good place. Um, and I also think, you know, a big issue is mental health. The the children, the the staff, the teachers, I think that was also something that COVID kind of exposed. Um, I think this year should be dedicated to really, um, you know, checking in on our teachers, checking in on our students, how are they doing? Things like anxiety and depression can go undetected even in the best of circumstances. Then you add a global pandemic to that, and and it's concerning. So I think just kind of being patient, um, giving our teachers the resources and time they need to do more check-ins when I'm with students, um, to make sure that everybody's truly okay as we get back to, you know, our new normal. In closing, um, I think, you know, the candidates did a wonderful job tonight. If you do plan on voting on May tenth, I hope you keep my name in mind. I think I would be a very strong and effective member of the committee. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure whether I'm on the screen or not anymore. I'm not sure how to get me.
You are. You're you're number one right there, Bob, in the center.
Great, yeah. So I'd like to thank uh Priscilla, our six candidates. Uh, this has been, I think, a great evening for the public, I, to This has been, I think, a great evening for the public to hear where you are on the various questions that we've asked. You know, we view the school committee as an awesome responsibility, and I'm so pleased that the six of you have stepped up and put your, your names on the ballot. The, for the public who, and please share this with anybody who didn't have a chance to see this tonight, because whatever the issues were at the beginning of the meeting, many people did get on, but I'm sure many people didn't also. That we believe that CTSB is going to try to show this. Obviously, today's the fourth, the election's the 10th. My guess is that they'll get it into their queue, and it will be shown, you know, several times. So please tell your, tell everyone you know that it was interesting seeing this who didn't have a chance to see it, that it will be on CTSB at some point. Perhaps starting as early as tomorrow, although I don't know how that all happens really. So again, thank you all very much. It's been a great honor to have the six of you speak tonight. I want to thank Shannon and Priscilla for the roles they played, and I look forward to working with whichever three of you get elected. Thank you.